I hereby call the meeting to order. Now, what we have to do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. Kathleen, I don't know how you did this every time. I always get nervous and and forget the words. Is there anyone here who can help me with the Pledge of Allegiance? How great. Okay, come on up, please.
Of United States of America and to the Republic for Richard Stan. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those are our children from the old Greenwich School. Now, are you guys? Is there something else you guys might know what to do for us right now? Oh, cool. Let's go. Go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, Board of Education members and guests. First, I would like to thank each of you for your service to all Greenwich Public Schools students. Second, I'd like to thank you for inviting the Old Greenwich School cast of Seussical to your meeting this evening. On behalf of our entire cast, we'd like to invite you to our performance on May 3rd through 5th at Old Greenwich School.
What a treat. Thanks, guys and girls. That was great. Awesome. Uh, now, uh, to, uh, some of our board business, let's go to the consent agenda. Uh, I move that we accept the minutes, uh, from February 23rd special and business meetings. Do I have a second? Second, uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that passes. At seven zero count, you'll be doing the the counting of that thing. Perfect. Six zero. Okay. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming. All right, we'll see ya. Good job. Excellent. Okay, now we have the student and staff recognition. Uh, first of all, will be the Scholastic Art Awards recipients. Ms. Nixon?
The art teachers of Greenwich High School and Eastern Middle School are very proud to recognize our eight Connecticut State Scholastic Art Award recipients from the high school and three award recipients from Eastern Middle School. At Eastern Middle School, three students earned an honorable mention, two Silver Key Awards and a Gold Key, and the CAE Aarmini Best in Mixed Media Award. From the high school, two received honorable mentions, three received Silver Awards, one of which was also awarded a Gold Key and a Hartford Art School Scholarship, and three received Gold Key Awards, one of which also was awarded at Hartford, a Hartford Art School Scholarship. Gold Key works automatically advance to national judging. In New York City, renowned creative professionals review Gold Key works from across the country, and jurors select work for national recognition based on three criteria, originality, skill, and emergence of a personal vision or voice. National awards will be announced on March 22nd. Now, in their 100th year, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the largest, longest, running, and most prestigious recognition program for creative young people in the United States. The awards have an impressive legacy dating back to 1923, and a noteworthy roster of past winners, including Andy Warhol, Ken Burns, Philip Perlstein, Red Grooms, Truman Capote, Richard Avedon, Robert Redford, and too many more to mention. This year alone, nearly 2,800 students entered original works from about 145 schools in Connecticut. I would like to recognize the art teachers, Summer Merritt from Eastern Middle School and from Greenwich High School, Lisa Skoragney, Jamie Charles, Cheryl Iozzo, Shakaba Bennett, Ben Kiznel, and Liz Vasquez for their teaching and encouragement of all of our students, and especially tonight, our Scholastic winners. I would also like to thank Michael Antonocchio, wherever you are in the stratosphere, for helping with this presentation, Jason Goldstein, the principal of Eastern Middle School, and Ralph Mayo, the principal of Greenwich High School, for their constant support for the arts. Laura Newell, our arts coordinator, Tony Jones, and the Board of Education for their ongoing dedication to providing the very best art education possible for our students in the Greenwich Public Schools. As I call your name, please come to the front to be congratulated by Dr. Tony Jones, our superintendent, and Joe Kelly, our board chair, and remain here until everyone has been called up. And please hold your applause until I have called everyone up. Caitlin Quinn, EMS, honorable mention. Isabel Deng, EMS, Silver Key. Lulu Wang, EMS, Silver Key, Gold Key, and CAE Aarmini Best in Mixed Media. Stay up here, Lulu. Monica Brown Smith, the rest of Greenwich High School, honorable mention, digital art. Nicholas O'Brien, GHS, honorable mention, drawing and illustration. Julian Lujan, GHS, Silver Key and Scholarship and Art Portfolio. Lucia Rosetto, GHS, Silver Key Photography. Mateo Zatella, Silver Key Drawing and Illustration. Lujan Julian also received a Gold Key and Scholarship. Casey Tierney, Gold Key Photography. Amanda Wong, Gold Key Ceramics and Glass. And Joshua Day, Gold Key and Scholarship Art Portfolio. Okay, now you can clap.
Okay, now the Scholastic Writing Award recipients, Ms. Barry?
Thank you very much, and good evening all. Uh, as Ms. Nixon said, the Scholastic Writing Awards is the nation's longest-running competitive, uh, competitive event for creative teens. And from our region, which is Hudson to Houston, it's very competitive, we have 15 winners in the writing category. Uh, as Ms. Nixon said, the Scholastic Awards began in 1923. And just as you heard familiar names for art winners, uh, over the years, many notable writers, including Sylvia Plath, John Updike, Joseph Carol Oates, Stephen King, many other winners. I think you'll be reading some of our writers in the future. Many of our writers are home writing even as we speak. If you are here, I haven't seen any of the writers, but if you are back there, um, please stand so you can enjoy some of the line light, and I will deliver, I'll hand-deliver all of the certificates tomorrow. So, um, strap strap yourselves in because we have a lot of winners. Uh, we have Miller Fishbank, honorable mention for journalism. Alexandra Gazinski, a Silver Key for flash fiction. Chloe Henskey, honorable mention for critical essay. Kristen Jacks, a Silver Key for a short story. Hannah Klingbell, honorable mention, journalism. Alexa Laura, Silver Key Poetry. Ashley Malkin, honorable mention for three poems and a Gold Key for flash fiction. Ashley Malkin is a, this is not her first time winning. Belle Nichols, Silver Key for a dramatic script. Aubrey Niederhafer, Gold Key for a personal essay. Shreya Prabhu, Silver Key for journalism and a Gold Key for journalism. Shreya also won a Silver Key for a personal essay. Ainsley Sarbeck, Silver Key for a short story. Natasha Samant, Silver Key for poetry. Elizabeth Wallace, Gold Key for poetry. Hubu Zhu, Critical Essay, honorable mention. And Zi Yan, winner for the third year. Ready? Six honorable mentions for poetry. 10 Silver Keys for poetry. One so, one Silver Key for, where is it? Oh, one honorable mention for a personal essay and four Gold Keys for poetry. Plus, Zi won a Gold Key and the American Voices nominee for poetry, which means for our region, she is one of five students for the region to be considered. They will choose one hasn't yet to be named to be the, um, the poet for the region. Pretty nice. Thank you. Thank you.
A lot to be proud of there. Greenwich School systems are is awesome. Uh, next is the Regeneron Science Talent Search. Uh, my friend Andy, uh, could come up here and talk a little of that.
Hi, everyone. How are you? Board, Joe, Dr. Jones? Um, I'm Andy Bermonte. I'm the, uh, science research teacher at Greenwich High School. Now, I could say I'm the research teacher for the junior innovators, for the middle schoolers, and that has been an awesome, awesome experience. Um, those were tough acts to follow, yeah. I mean, I was looking at the little kids and I, you know, I get to know these, I've gotten to know these two young ladies, um, quite well. And I was looking at the little kids and I remembered those pictures that you showed me of when you guys were that age. Thinking, wow, look at what you've done in so little time. Um, anyway, to the Regeneron business. Um, so in late February, uh, Regeneron announced their 40 top students or finalists for the Regeneron Talent Search from the 300 scholars that were picked a week prior. Um, amongst those 40 finalists were two of our GHS, um, research students, Angelina Fogarty, or Angie, as I know her, and Ambika Grover. Uh, Angie was selected for her work entitled Rapid Visual Detection of Illicit Substances in a Variety of Environments via Competitive Aminew responsive Fluorophores. Uh, and Ambika was selected for her work entitled Design of a Novel Dual-Functioning Tissue Plasminogen Activator and Factor 11 Inhibiting Anticoagulant Therapeutic for Rapid ischemic Stroke Treatment. I'm out of breath just on those, right? For a change, these young ladies are going to tell you what they did, which really takes the pressure off for me, but before they do, uh, Angie and Ambika represent the eighth and the ninth high school finalists in the last 15 years from the nearly 50 scholars that we've had at the same time. This places GHS Science Research, the program alongside the most prestigious science, high school, specialized schools, public schools, you name it. Um, being selected as a, as a finalist in Regeneron places these two young ladies in the company with so many talented young scientists that have gone on to become leaders, including 13 Nobel Prize winners, 22 MacArthur Foundation Fellows, and more. So with these visionaries, Angie and Ambika share their love for scientific discovery for the most profound reason, and that's their desire to apply their innate gifts of technological imagination, creativity, and persistence to help others. Uh, I'm so incredibly proud of these two young ladies. So for their further troubles as finalists, they won $27,000, something like that? And I am proud to tell you, I mean, the cat's kind of out of the bag because it was in the paper today, but Ambika was only, uh, was that two days ago, right? Two days ago was selected as sixth place in that competition, and her, her winnings total $82,000. She promised me lunch, so I'm, I'm waiting for that. Anyway, so ladies, come on up. And, uh, I think they, maybe they queued up your little poster and you could talk about what you've done, so. Uh, Angie, you want to go first? All right. I hope you like white.
My gosh, what an introduction. It feels so special. So I'll try to keep this short and as easy to understand as possible. Um, I essentially created a color-changing sensor that's responsive to amines, which is a class of macromolecules. And my vision with with this research was to apply it as a sensor for the detection of difenohydramine, which we commonly know as Benadryl. This can be used for users who are at a party or a bar to allow them to rapidly test their drink to test if it's been spiked with any drugs that could help, uh, an assaulter to engage in drug-facilitated sexual assault. So in short, I use two fluorescent dyes, a green fluorescent dye and a red fluorescent dye. This green fluorescent dye is specifically reactive to the amines compounds in those drugs, and that leads to the quieting of the dye, whereas the red fluorescent dye is unaffected by this, and that allows it to continue to fluoresce, um, even in the presence of those drugs, and that creates the visual red to green color shift. I also had to test this with a variety of different additives because, um, if you were to test this in practical usage with a variety of different cocktails, it had to be pH and color-stable. So I've added mechanisms to ensure that it's able to continue to fluoresce properly in a variety of different environments. And lastly, to extend this research, um, because it's not specific to just difenohydramine, applicable to a variety of other amines, I've tested it with pyrol. This is an amines found in the breath of marijuana smokers but absent from that of cigarette smokers, and this allows it to be put into practice for use as a marijuana breathalyzer, similar to current alcohol breathalyzer tests for those driving under the influence of illicit substances. That is my very short summary because I have a week's worth of makeup work to do. All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Ambika. So I want to start by, before I get into the exactly what I did in terms of my research, I just want to start with a really quick introduction of what strokes are and specifically what an ischemic stroke is. So many of you may have heard, uh, heard of the term strokes. You may know someone who's been affected by a stroke. Um, and an ischemic stroke is a type of stroke in which an artery becomes partially or completely blocked due to the presence of a blood clot or a thrombus. And this basically restricts the movement of oxygen, glucose, and other valuable nutrients we need from reaching our brain. And so as a result, within a few minutes, a patient can have life-endangering, um, lack of oxygen reaching their brain. This can lead to disability and is oftentimes in nearly half the cases fatal to the patient. So our existing medicine to treat this disease was approved by the FDA in 1996, and it's known as tissue plasminogen activator, or TPA. But there's a few shortcomings that I found when I started my research journey, which is that it doesn't localize to the site of the blood clot, which means when a patient gets this intravenously, it freely circulates throughout the bloodstream. And I also realized that we don't stop something known as the coagulation cascade, which is the mechanism by which a clot is actively rebuilt in, uh, in real time. So in essence, there are two problems in treating strokes. The first is that our therapeutics don't localize to the clot site, but we also don't stop the mechanism by which that clot is rebuilt. And those are the challenges I wanted to resolve in my research. So to do this, I engineered this nanoparticle microbubble-like structure, um, which basically has peptides that are able to localize to the site of a blood clot, break it down using TPA, and then use a factor 11 inhibiting anticoagulant, which basically means we're stopping this cascade by which the clots are actively rebuilt. And so to verify that this microbubble structure I engineered had worked, um, I created in vitro vertical channel gel systems which mimic what a clot would look like in the lab. And I also drew my own blood to generate blood clots, um, and to simulate that in real human blood conditions. So in essence, this research holds promise for breaking up blood clots in the case of ischemic strokes, but can also be applied to other diseases like heart attacks, um, deep venous thrombosis, and any conditions in which blood clots are quite prominent. Um, thank you so much.
I don't know about you guys, but the hairs were standing up on the back of my neck about being proud of the little bit of contribution we do up here on the board to the school systems and the products we put out. So I just, uh, wow, Andy, that's great. I just, I got a really good feeling about what just happened, so thank you very much for that. Okay, is Lil here? And it's now time for the GEA to, to speak. Sorry, that's right, you guys. Student Government, we have, uh, Student Body Vice President Mitch Goldstein. Mitch, it's your turn to speak.
No, it's, it's jaw-dropping work that they're doing there. It's really impressive, actually. So good evening, everyone, board members and meeting attendees. Like, uh, Chairman Kelly said, my name is Mitch Goldstein. I am the Student Body Vice President this year. I want to start by addressing several of the items on the action agenda for tonight. Firstly, as I've repeatedly said, I cannot express students' excitement about adding a linear algebra course. The official class will allow students to advance their knowledge in niche areas of mathematics and help prepare them for more advanced courses that students will take in college, all while keeping them in the classroom setting rather than having them take the course online. Secondly, I want to thank, I want, excuse me, secondly, I want to say that the GHS Student Government supports the approval of the new entranceway plans. Although these plans are less extravagant than the original ones, it's imperative that something is done to the entranceway to ensure student safety at GHS. Next, on behalf of all the seniors, I want to thank Dr. Jones for recommending June 15 as our graduation date. I know many seniors and especially senior parents are eager to learn the official date for graduation. However, regardless of the date, I know that this day will be extraordinary. Back at GHS, the Student Government has been working closely with the food services staff. And I want to applaud Mr. Nannarello, Head Chef Nico, and Food Production Coordinator Jessica Caposa for their dedication to serving the students. I truly cannot express how fantastic working with them has been. They are incredibly receptive to student feedback and have done an incredible job of improving food quality in the Cardinal Cafe. Some highlights of the cafeteria include adding cultural foods, which have helped diversify the menu. Additionally, they plan on replacing one of the school's sandwich bars with a salad bar, which I expect to be widely popular with the GHS Student Body. On a different note, with Black History Month coming to a close at the end of February, I want to shed light on a specific, on a significant student concern. The GHS Diversity Awareness Club and its advisor typically organize an energetic week in the middle of February to celebrate the diversity of our community. Daily announcements are made, and optional assemblies are held each day for students. However, due to staffing challenges this year, only a handful of events occurred and announcements were rarely made. Speaking of staffing challenges, it's interesting to think that the district has not considered hiring a diversity equity and inclusion officer to handle matters like these. In future years, I hope that Diversity Awareness Week during Black History Month will be as significant as it once was. On behalf of the Student Body, thank you all for your time. I look forward to continuing to work with the board throughout our final four months of the school year. I now pass the microphone over to Student Body President Isabella Gega.
Thank you.
Isabella, straight from rugby practice. I hope it didn't weigh you out today.
I actually got hit in the face today, so a little sore. Um, good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the board, and meeting attendees. I am Isabella Gega, the Student Body President at Greenwich High School. In the long month of March, students have found themselves pondering on the following school year. Considering this, GHS Student Government has set out the election packet for the 2023-2024 school year. We have decided to move forth with our newly organized, um, structure, given its efficiency, and we look forward to new leadership. In addition to elected positions this spring, we have students, um, applying for an opportunity to become class reps in the fall. Beyond this, seniors have applied for their senior options on school links are beyond excited for the May 15th. Internship and projects are an excellent way for students to get real-world experience and pursue their interests beyond school. Though signups were low before the March 15th deadline, students turned a corner and submitted them on time. Since the end of the school year is coming fast, the senior class has begun prom planning, reaching out to commencement speakers to prepare, to prepare for graduation. Furthermore, the senior class officers have planned activities to excite students for the remaining dates together. We appreciate the collaborative efforts between Excom and GHS administration to ensure that there are feminine products in the girls' bathroom. We began with bathroom, uh, baskets of products glued to chairs, but we have started transitioning to permanent dispensers that we are very excited about. Providing access to feminine hygiene products is essential for promoting menstrual hygiene management and supporting the needs of girls and women. Therefore, we thank you. Moreover, the GHS therapy dog has been a topic of interest recently. Our student gov, our student resource officers and the PTA have shown unwavering support and recognize the therapy dogs can positively impact the overall well-being and academic performance of our school. They can help create a supportive and nurturing environment that promotes learning, growth, and emotional well-being. We hope the correct steps are taken to soon welcome, to soon welcome home a new furry friend at GHS. Finally, our school partnered with the Anti-Defamation League to facilitate Names Day for our freshman class. They engaged in insightful presentations, participated in meaningful conversations, and reevaluated our efforts to be an ally. We, as a school, are doing our best to combat bullying and discrimination, but we can always do better. Bless you. As always, thank you for this opportunity and for your time here tonight. I look forward to speaking to you all again in a month's time.
Before we lose some of our students, uh, do we have an update on the hockey game that's going on right now? Anyone know what's happening? No? Okay, maybe if you can find out, that'd be great. We could bring everyone up to date. The boys' hockey team is in the semifinals of the state championship this evening.
Joe? It's Karen. I do have an update. The unfortunately, uh, we're not, uh, we're not successful in their, their, uh, their game. I think they're down, it's like they lost five now, nil. Yeah, five nil.
Well, okay. Well, thank you for the news.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, Lil, how do you follow the announcement of the loss of the hockey team? I'd like to see you do that, and please, uh, the floor is yours. Lil, you can talk now.
Okay, I was waiting to get unmuted. Not something that I'm used to. All right, so Chairman Kelly, uh, Board of Ed members, Dr. Jones, um, first of all, uh, I want to say, people know me, if I have something important to say, I like to be in person. Unfortunately, I cannot be in three places, um, this evening. Um, but my first place, the rugby team from Texas that's playing Greenwich today was in the room next door to me, and I went in the room and, uh, spoke with them. So Joe, do you have an update for me?
Do I have an update for you? You spoke to them, and unfortunately, the Greenwich High School rugby team lost yesterday. They did not prevail. It was a, uh, the, uh, team from Texas was very confused that that white stuff falling from the sky, they were unaware of what it was.
Yeah, I, the parents told me, so thank you. Uh, I will continue now. So, uh, back when I was hired in 1983, uh, Ernie Fleishman was our superintendent. Often heard him say, if it's good for students, then it's good for Greenwich. Also, when I first became president in 2003, my mentor was Joanne Zama, uh, a distinguished teacher at Greenwich. She also used to say to me, that which we tolerate, we accept. And that what we accept becomes the practice. I say this because I know there's lots of construction projects going on in, in the town. And I'm not going to beat a dead, dead horse here. I'm just going to be brief on this. But why is it that everybody? But why is it that every budget that comes the way of the town, whether it's the BOE or school construction, is always cut to bare bones? We need to do better. Our students deserve the best and our community does. Can we please end this madness? Please support all the budgets that come through. Next, I was very excited, um, yesterday. Uh, I spent 12 hours up at the Capitol, was there for the, uh, news conference, where over 600 teachers, uh, provided written testimony to the legislators, urging them to pass the comprehensive bill containing key, uh, recommendations. There were 167 speakers who presented in person to the legislature. I was one of them, among with the other teachers. The education committee is considering two, um, significant House bills, six eight eight four and six eight eight one that would increase educators' salaries and address other critical barriers to teacher recruitment intentions. This landmark legislation would reverse decades of policy that have led to teacher attrition, shrinking teacher pipeline or working conditions. And listening to the speeches, it's not just about teachers. It, it's about parents. It's about, um, special education. There are a lot of good things that will help not only teachers, but boards of ed. Some of the examples are, the, which I think this is a big one. The, uh, State Board of Education Department is, uh, one of the legislative laws is that they're going to have advisory members for the State Department of Ed. 10 of those members total, five will be distinguished teachers, past distinguished teachers, and five will be teachers appointed. This is important to districts and teachers. Having teacher representation on the State Board of Education is so important because you will have people with real world, um, implications who are in the classroom and have classroom practice with new initiatives. That are, that are, um, I'm sorry, I, I just lost my page here. Sorry. It's important because the people up at the State Department of Ed aren't current in the real world, what's happening in, in the schools, the hands-on practice with technology, and having a teacher advisory when they consider new initiatives and having the discussion before they're implemented will save districts lots of money, frustration on teachers' part. For example, the CTSEDS onboarding was a disaster, technical glitches, and, um, initiating the pro, and initiating certain programs like the, the reading program or other programs, put, uh, unburdened financial, uh, distress on districts that don't need to have that program and it just doesn't fit. So I thought that was a big, um, positive, uh, thing, uh, for that. There were laws to help with, it's all through the, the state of Connecticut and the country, plans to help with, um, financing and helping, uh, teachers stay in the program. New teachers have all, uh, graduates have all these extra test costs. Trying to, um, uh, find a way to help support districts to pay parents more. We have, we have a sub shortage, so a lot of good things are in that bill. Um, and I, I'm honored to try and, uh, work on a lot of those committees and give testimonies. Because this is, this is a collaboration that, that the, the state, um, and the teachers' union, uh, can help, you know, districts and teachers. Lastly, um, I did notice, uh, for tonight, um, talking about, um, our budget on Blaze does his, uh, presentation. I'm going to say this again, in the, in the presentation, I noticed there's 1.6 million of available grand dollars that will expire in six thirty twenty-three. Now, if you don't have a place to spend that money, and I hope you don't give it back. I am going to say again, uh, that it would be nice to give teachers and parents that work during the COVID because there is a legislation bill that will be moving forward. But it will not, uh, deal with the people that currently work during the COVID, uh, over these last two years. So think about it, show teachers they are valued and they work as they do respected, uh, our parents too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lil. Okay, now it's Francis Wu Nobey's turn for PTAC. Francis is working together with us to try to, uh, organize, uh, people to march on the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday down Greenwich Avenue. So far, we have about 200 people, uh, from the school systems who have signed up. So, uh, more the merrier. Francis, welcome.
Hello, this is Frances Wu Nobey, mom of three GPS kids and the 2022-2023 President of the Greenwich Parent Teacher Advisory Council. As the 15 PTAs who make up the Greenwich PTA Council head into nominating season, I want to share my PTA journey and why you should consider a PTA role at your school or at the district level. My first roles were helping to promote summer reading and stapling international night passports. I then moved up to hand, handing out ice cream tickets to co-representing remote school families. I absolutely love working hand in hand with my fellow parents for the benefit of our kids. I'm delighted to share my time and talents to making our schools the best they can be. I have met so many incredible super volunteers, moms, dads, working, commuting, doing similar at your schools. Please join your local PTA today and thank you so much for volunteering. Turning to hot topics in tonight's consent agenda, PTAC continues to stand with our Greenwich Public School families and advocate for full funding of our school buildings. We will continue to press for full funding until the capital budget is passed. We appreciate everything the Board of Education has done to do the absolute, uh, to, to advance the capital projects at Central Middle School, Old Greenwich School, Julian Curtis. And we call on the board to remain unanimous in continuing to represent the best interests of our public school families and the Greenwich community. It was all of you who had already spent months of thoughtful deliberation to determine what's best for our kids. There is no reason to reopen the debate on the specifications or the building project scopes and put the state reimbursement deadline at risk. More importantly, it puts our kids at risk. Now, as Joe said, let's march proudly, hand in hand at Sunday St. Patrick's Day Parade. I'll be there with my kids, knowing that we each did our part together to support our kids. In closing, please join PTAC virtually on March 31 in honor of Earth Day to hear Julie DeChamps share all the great progress the Green Schools team has made. Details and recordings of prior meetings are posted on the PTAC website and see you on Sunday.
Thank you, Frances. It's now time for community comments. I didn't skip anything, did I, Kathleen? Oh, good. All right, Dina Orso is first. Is she online? Oh, there you are. Catalina Moore is next.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the, uh, Board of Education. My name is Dina Urso and I'm one of the co-presidents of the CMS PTA and speaking on its behalf. My co-president Jen Behet and I have been attending the building committee meetings virtually and have followed the conversations concerning the appropriate size of the new building. Regardless of how many square feet it ends up being, the CMS PTA strongly advocates in favor of three things. One, that the quality of the educational programming must not be compromised. Two, that the administrators and teachers must be prominent participants in the conversation. This is the group of people who know more than anyone else what a middle school the 21st century needs for this town. Please continue to hear them as their input is integral, especially during these formative stages. And three, the building committee, the BOE and the BET must work together and proactively to keep this project on track. June 30th is approaching at warp speed with each week that passes. It is not a sign of weakness to be the first to open the lines of communication. Please do not let egos or red tape cause any unnecessary delay. Our children in our community need all groups involved to work together as quickly and as efficiently as possible. In closing, the PTA is very appreciative of all the volunteers involved in the process. We are more than willing to help by educating and advocating in any way that may be helpful in seeing this process through to the end. Thank you for your time.
Catalina. Next is Courtney Murphy.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. My name is Catalina Morda. I'm an old Greenwich resident and mother of two children at OGS. One in preschool, one in fourth grade, which is probably the youngest, uh, person in the room right now. So thank you to my son for handling this. I'm here today to speak in support of a much-needed, much-overdue project, the OGS renovation project. First and foremost, I'd like to share my surprise and in fact, how appalled I was as a newcomer last year to discover that OGS lacked ADA compliant accessible entrances ramps or an elevator, violating not only the law, but also compromising the fundamental values of equity and inclusion in public education. As a foreigner doing my PhD sometime ago here in the US, I remember vividly remembering how accessible things were, schools, public buildings, even national parks. And I was amazing and really one of the admirable aspects of this country, in my opinion. To find out that our neighborhood, neighborhood school must turn away children with mobility limitations for lack of appropriate access was mind-blowing to say the least. Secondly, and something that troubles me very much is the lack of a recommended secure entrance allowing direct visibility of visitors from the main office. I confess this might not have ranked high in my radar while living abroad, but it does rank very high here and it needs to be done now here and it's urgent. Next, where should we go next? Are the basements where my daughter spends her school day can flood, can be encroached by raw sewage and poor air quality? During previous pandemic measures and still now when there's COVID positive paces, uh, cases, classroom windows must be open, even when it's really freezing outside for lack of an appropriate HVAC system? How in very hot days, children and teachers must endure high temperatures and potential high ozone levels for lack of such a system? How should kids and adults with asthma cope with this? And how can all our children focus, learn, and thrive under such circumstances? What are we asking of them that we would not tolerate in our work environment or our homes? How much must teachers and other staff still overcome to do their job properly? Lastly, as a scientist familiar with climate research and projections, I cannot avoid thinking what lies ahead. Sooner than later, we will have more floods, more frequent and more intense storms, heat waves among, among other events. Bringing this building up to standard fire code regulations, protecting it against storm surges and flooding, installing a proper HVAC system that can maintain safe, healthy, and comfortable environment to our students and staff is not a luxury. It's a basic requirement. Furthermore, it's also an investment in a local community, not only in their school and in the value of their properties, but as a safety aspect. Think for instance, in the case of very likely blackouts or shelter, shelter emergency needs during these potentially extreme events I mentioned. For this and many other reasons, I wholeheartedly support the OGS renovation as well as the socially and physically responsible decision, decision to move ahead as swiftly as possible. That means now. With this, and on behalf of my children as well, I would like to thank the Board of Education for its previous unanimous support of this project. And I would really encourage you all members to continue to do so. It's really important. I'd also like to thank our principal, Jen Ben Civengo, for the wonderful job at keeping this school running as efficiently and as smooth, smoothly as possible under these circumstances. And to thank the OGS Building Committee for their tireless efforts and informative actions. They are ready and I hope the BET is ready as well. Thank you all. Have a very good evening.
Courtney, your turn. Roger Rosendahl is next.
Good evening, Chair Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the BOE. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned parent, asking the Board of Ed to can, reconfirm its support for the updated funding of the Old Greenwich School renovation and to ask you to advocate for the BET to support this necessary project. My son's in fifth grade at OGS and was part of the Seussical Performance tonight. I also have a daughter in second and another who will be in K at OGS next year. When we were moving out of the city eight years ago, we looked for a community that, among other factors, was walkable, diverse, and had good public schools. We've been incredibly happy with the decision to date, thanks to the heroic leadership of Jen Ben Civengo and all the teachers who make the magic happen every day, as well as the leadership of Tony Jones and the BOE during the challenging COVID years in particular. Thank you for all that you do. I know I'm speaking to the choir and the many critical needs of OGS are well-known at this point, but I'd be remiss in not mentioning that in first grade, the teacher for my daughter had to create a diaper in the door frame to avoid sewage from coming into the classroom. And the lack of accessibility is not just about an elevator. It prohibits students with disability or injury from attending. It makes assemblies with grandparents or other guests impossible. Related to security, with mass shootings at schools across the country, our children are accustomed to lockdown drills. We no longer allow our children to enter the door closer to, to their classroom, instead having the central door open to avoid potential security breaches. However, with our school right off I-95, we still do not have a secure entrance with sightlines to the office. And the new plans would remedy this and other critical issues, including air quality. So my requests are as follows. The OGS Building Committee is ready to start construction in spring 2024 if construction funding is provided by the BET. If the BET does not provide construction funding, please support their request for incremental pre-construction funding so they can keep moving forward. I've heard that the BET and BOE are asking the building committee to explore the cost of new construction while they're creating the schematic design for the OGS renovation. I'm a bit concerned that this ask from the BET is coming so late in the game, over two years after a feasibility study was conducted and a year and a half after the BOE approved the OGS ed specs. Construction costs have gone up significantly and we need to face reality. It's unrealistic to think that a new construction school would cost the same as a renovation. It's important that the BOE and BET move forward on this quickly, keeping up with the building committee and support the OGS community. Our school has a strong, consistent enrollment of 400-plus students and OGS residents are tired of this project getting kicked down the road. I hope you'll support the OGS project tonight and the BOE will do whatever it can to advocate for the project and keep it on track. It's time to make the facility of OGS match the quality of the education, not only for our children, but for generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, Roger. I saw him earlier. Steve Waco, did you see Roger? Okay, well, we can always invite him to speak, uh, at another interval of the evening. Okay, now we're off to the superintendent's report. That's you, Tony. Fantastic.
Um, just a couple of items tonight. I want to start out, um, and first of all, say, so I don't forget, a very special thank you to the Board of Education. And this is Board of Education Month and so we're, we honor and thank you for everything that you do. And I mean, you are paid just so well for all of your service, zero. Um, and the amount of time that you spend in meetings, but I don't even think necessarily the public understands how much you do outside of these meetings, just to get prepared for tonight. So thank you so much. And this is on behalf of everybody in Greenwich Public Schools. There is a chocolate bar to help you get through the evening and another little small token of our appreciation. I also want to say congratulations to all of our students who have their work in the district art show. That's at 299 Greenwich Avenue. It is still up and you can still stop by. So if you're down there this weekend for the parade, you know, you might be able to stop in. Also, a special thank you to Mike Antonaccia, who was very swift and had been working on updating our strategic plan, uh, website. And so I know there was a wonderful letter. Uh, thank you, Dr. McEntee Anthony, uh, in the paper. And the website is up for the community so people can see, see the important work that we're doing. We all, we did submit our waiver, um, to the Connecticut State Department of Education. And when I was meeting with our state representatives at Western, uh, it was shared with me that they thought they were going to get 40 waivers from across the state. They got well over 100. So we don't know what the timeline will be. This is going to take a lot longer for them, uh, to actually review the waivers. And we will be having that on our agenda for next month as requested. So they're working on that presentation for you right now. Um, and last but not least, I do just want to say, um, we did have Representative Fazio, we had, uh, Connor, uh, Arzino, and then Representative Curry, who is chair of the Education Committee, all were onsite, spent several hours at All were onsite, spent several hours at Western touring the school. They got to see classrooms. And probably one of the best things was there was a panel of four of the avid students. And just listening to how avid is impacting our students at that age was phenomenal. There was one young lady, and I'll just briefly share. She was talking about, you know, just she didn't know anything about going to college and these are middle schoolers. And she didn't know that you had to pay to go to college. She didn't know that you really should look at colleges. She didn't know what was available. And she was actually saying she came from a family where she will be the first, you know, to ever go to college. And so she just around the dinner table, didn't have anybody to help her have those conversations. And now, not only with her, but her family, they're able to do that. So, I know the Alliance has been an enormous partner for us, but the work that we are doing, our representatives were just so impressed. And a special thanks to Representative Curry, who does not represent us, but has chaired the Education Committee, wanted to see the great work going on in Greenwich. So, we've had a wonderful couple of weeks showcasing just so many wonderful things that you saw tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions? Yes, Michael?
Tony, I don't know if you can clarify this or not. There was a comment made during, by the GEA president about an enormous sum of unspent money. Is there any clarity you could provide on that?
It could be two things. I'll have to follow up, but we don't have an enormous of unspent money. We're watching every penny, but there is a different grant that actually was flowing through for, but it wasn't for like ARP funding. It was more for our new special education program. So, I don't know if that's showing up anywhere, but it's not that sum of money. So, I think it's just the way the report looks right now. Probably what we can see is encumbered and what is maybe not spent yet, but we're still waiting on items. No, we are going to spend that money.
I was worried about that. I was going to ask later on. Thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. Anyone else with a question to the superintendent? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move on to our individual reports. Our officers, committees, and liaisons. Now, most of us or all of us who work on building committees will have a time to speak, so we don't speak now. Any other things that anyone's working on and they'd like to update us on? Kathleen?
Hi, okay. Greenwich Alliance. Julie was good enough to send me some updates, so let me just read it here. Reaching out, grant applications are due on March 24th. Applications must first be approved by Dr. Caravilla. Dare to Care, a longtime Alliance grant, was featured on the front page of the Greenwich Times on Tuesday, March 14th. Dr. Alina and Fabian, sorry, I'm not going to say that right. While hosted a parent-child retreat at North Street School, calling glowing and growing to teach mindfulness, yoga, and craft making centered around making things to calm oneself down. Patrick Briggs, avid Eastern Director, spoke at PTAC Public Session and also led two professional development sessions at GHS on Monday. Avid is much more than executive functioning skills. Patrick will be at Western Middle School on March 28th and all board members are welcome to attend and learn. Trivia challenge. Thanks to everyone who played and are bid on auction items. The event raised $30,000 for Greenwich Public Schools.
Thank you. That's great. Anybody else? Michael?
So, the Strategic Plan Committee met a few weeks ago. As Dr. Jones mentioned, and the website's updated and you'll, please, everybody saw the message from the Board of Ed as a whole in the local paper. I know it was at least in one. I don't know if it's been in the others yet, but we sent it to all the local media around just advertising the plan as was adopted last month by us. The other thing that the Strategic Plan Committee talked about was, we call the board as a whole charged us with revising or taking another look at the board goals. We're continuing to work on that. We're hoping to bring that back next month after another strategic plan meeting for the board's consideration. We also talked a little bit about the opportunity I mentioned last month to host a Research Ed Conference at some point next year. This would be an exciting professional development opportunity to host an international speakers, a nonprofit-type setting, really put Greenwich on the map. I'll continue to have conversations. Dr. Jones and I is working on possibly an Alliance grant to help fund that. And I have meetings, a meeting with Research Ed on Friday where we're going to give some more details. We should have some more details, bring the board around those efforts next month. And if we move forward, then maybe form a Community Committee to champion that effort.
Michael, you've been busy. Thank you. Excellent. Anybody else? I will jump in with a quick, Laura?
Just a short update from the distinguished teacher awards committee. We have to pick up our packets from Jonathan over there at Havemeyer. So, that's where we stand. We'll be looking at some hopefully great nominations for our educators.
Great. I will update myself now. I've been working a little bit with the United Way and finding out the great work they do. And the important work they do before they kind of reach our schools has been amazing. I didn't realize how much they actually do. I know that Tony works closely with them. And Dave Raben had explained all the stuff they do and it's just very exciting and I'm learning more and more. I went on the radio program just recently with David, talking about how we can work together and how he can, or I can help him help raise private funds to invest in our children. So, I think it's a great project and we'll certainly have to support them as best we can. Also, I am working, I'm on a committee with Ralph Mayo, with Fred Camillo and our Athletic Director for the Parade of Champions, which we are going to be having in June 11th down Greenwich Avenue. Ralph Mayo is trying to decide what level of success of teams will be marching in this parade. Certainly, the state champions will have that opportunity. It's up to Ralph to decide whether it's going to be other awards that have been achieved, but we have a lot of great teams in the athletic program. Certainly, everybody knows that I was very involved in the athletic program for years. So, I'm very happy to support such a parade of our kids down Greenwich Avenue and honor them. We hope to make this on Ralph's suggestion. We hope to make this an annual thing. We're speaking to the Old Timers Athletic Association to possibly work as our partner to help us run this every year. So, there's lots of good things to bring people out and celebrate our good stuff at our schools. Also, as Francis already mentioned, and I'm very excited about the massive number of people that would be marching with us under the Board of Ed banner. All these different schools will be marching in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We will be meeting at 1:30 on the side of Havemeyer Building on the upper parking lot at 1:30. And then we'll march across or cross to the town hall where we begin the marching of the parade. All children with parents, teachers, everybody, Board of Ed members. We certainly, Laura had made up our Board of Ed sign last year, our marching sign, which we'll be carrying again proudly down Greenwich Avenue for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Anybody else? Oh. Karen?
I just have a comment regarding the Parade of Champions. I think it's a fabulous idea, but I would, I'd highly stress that it not be just athletic teams. But as your point in talking with Ralph, we have such great champions around the, in all levels, whether it's in the arts and music and as we saw tonight with respect to all of our wonderful scientists, et cetera. And I think it would be exclusionary just to have it directed at sports, but rather have, find a way to incorporate for all of the champions in all of the disciplines throughout the high school, if that's what we're looking at.
It's a great suggestion. Our first committee meeting is on Tuesday. I will bring it up in the committee meeting. And if you're available, we might take other members to the committee and maybe you can participate and maybe bring that as far as later on as it's received in the committee. Is that okay?
Yeah, happy to help.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will then move off to, dun, duh, duh, action items. All right, we're going to start with the JC Building Committee. I believe I've got to make a motion to bring this to the floor for discussion. Is that correct? Okay, good. But I make a motion to approve the retention of Antonazi Associates as the architects for the Julian Curtis School Project. May I ask, first let me introduce Bill Kelly. Hold on, I've got to get a second. Okay, thank you for the second. Good thing she's here, otherwise I'd mess everything up. Bill has been a Board of Ed member for eight years. He was a BET member for four years. He has served on multiple building committees. He has been the Chair of many building committees. He is kind of a good guy, too. I've been working with him. He's all right. So, Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. Dr. Jones, I can answer one of your questions for you. The amount of time that a Board of Ed member dedicates to the school system was actually quantified when I was on the board in about the year 2000, 2001. And we calculated 600 hours a year is what a Board of Ed member does, contributes to the community. The Chair does a bit more, just so you know. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Bill Kelly. I'm the Chair of the Julian Curtis Building Committee. And I've gotten to know Julian Curtis, the school system, the school, and Trish McGuire, the Principal, who is fabulous. And so, we're seeing what we can do for Julian Curtis. We had about five or six architects coming for the walk-around, but they were scared off a little bit by the phasing of the project because it was kind of convoluted for them. We ended up, however, with Antonazi Associates, who Chairman Kelly and myself and the entire committee is very fortunate to have. They're very good. They've got strong recommendations. And we would like to meet with them tomorrow and get started. So, we have a meeting at 7:45 AM tomorrow. And I would seek the approval of the Board of Ed in order to enter into negotiations with them so that we can get a contract done and get rolling on Julian and Curtis. And as I said in my notes to you, we would start off with the 1 and 1A, which is the elevator and the ADA. And then hopefully, if the security in the front entrance was approved for $800,000, in May, we would then supplement and the contract and get that rolling. And we also have enough funds in our architectural design funds to start to look at the cafeteria. And then we could come back to you with real plans, real ideas. And then our job is to, you know, work with the BET and the Board of Ed and the community and see what we can do. So, that's it.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
Thank you.
Karen? Oh, this one. Almost, you almost got away.
No, 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 that's fine. That was a great idea, by the way. I wanted to tell you.
Oh.
The Parade of Champions, when you see the two, oh me, Jesus. Schemic strokes and I'm like, I'm sitting here going, my God. But it was always, it was always, whenever I was on the Board of Ed, it was the same thing. These kids would get up and they'd just blow you away. That was probably the best part of being on the Board. It was really the communication with them and the fun.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. No, 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 it's fine.
I get a microphone and I just go.
Trust me, Joe has the same problem.
It's a Kelly thing, you know, we were working on.
So, my question to you is, was this the only firm that didn't shy away from the fact of the phasing? Or did we have other options?
No, this was the only firm who put in a bid. And so, we were going to, we were thinking about coming back and rebidding, but they were so good and they were so knowledgeable, we decided to go with them. We think they're, we strongly recommend them to you.
Have they done any other work for Greenwich Public School system?
Yeah, they have.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, they have.
Okay.
So, they know, they know the system, which is if you don't know the system of the Town of Greenwich and how to get things passed and stamped, you're done for. And they do.
No, that was my two questions. I noticed that the other references here for the other districts that they'd worked on.
Dan Watson has worked with them and he likes them.
Okay.
All right, he put his stamp of approval. Really, if he had said no or he had wavered in any way, you know, Dan, Joe and I are tight. We're working together. So.
Now, I'm worried.
You should be. It was sort of like, I'm here, there, sort of like that, I think. Right, right, right.
St. Patrick's Day tomorrow, guys. Not yet.
Okay, anybody else for a question about the JC project? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Thanks, Bill.
I actually have.
Is that God? No, Karen? Oh.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I just had one quick question because in the document that you provided to us, the phase one through four, you said it was a total of $411,250,000. And then the bid was $416,800. Can you just explain to us what the difference between, you know, what else was included after the $411?
No, we're just dealing with the number $411. That's all we're going to deal with and they know that.
Okay.
I don't have any more, I don't have any more money for them. So.
Okay, that's, so, right. So, they submitted a bid for $416,000, but we're going to be looking towards the contract for $411.
Yeah, we're not going to do a contract for $411. We're going to do a contract for the Phase 1 and 1A, which is only going to be about $99,000. Then we'll supplement it with Phase 2, which will be about another $60,000. So, we'll go with that. We'll go incrementally until we have buy-in from the BET or Board of Ed as to what we can do. And we will certainly come with you, to you with a plan. So.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I can vote in favor. That's right, I could, yeah.
Okay, let's call the question. All in favor, raise your hand. And Cody and Karen, how do you vote?
In favor.
Karen?
Yes, I vote in favor.
Thank you. And Bill?
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, see you tomorrow morning, Bill. Thank you. Okay, next, for efficiency's sake, I've been trying, I tried it out once on Michael and it worked very well. I am going to transfer my superpowers as a Board Chair to Christina to run the entryway discussion. So, transferred.
Thank you, Joe. I'm going to put, we have two motions on the table, slightly revised wording on one of them. So, and Mike Antonaccio, I'll send it to you. The first motion is that we approve the Greenwich High School Secure Entryway Project. Final plans and specifications dated February 27th, 2023, as corrected for Scribner's errors and the addition of an ad alternate for glass at the security desk and professional cost estimate dated March 15th, 2023, to be submitted to the Office of School Construction Grants and Review for Approval to Advertise to Bid. May I have a second? Mr. Kelly, I'll give it to him. And I'm going to make the other motion just because they're all kind of linked together. The second motion is that we approve the educational specifications for the Greenwich High School Entryway Project, originally dated March 27th, 2020, approved by the Board April 24th, 2020, as revised March 15th, 2022, approved by the Board on March 14th, 2022, and is further revised March 16th, 2023. May I have a second? Ms. Stowe can do that one. I know these are very wordy and lengthy, but as we've learned through the high school entryway process, you have to be very technical when you're dealing with the state in terms of the things that are said. So, I'm going to turn over the microphone, so to speak, to our Building Chair, Mr. Steve Walco, just since we're recognizing our building chairs this evening. Just want to, Steve's an amazing building chair. He should chair all building committees. I can say that. He would not agree. He served on the RTM for many years. He's had a long service at the town. On the RTM, he chaired the BOC. He served on the BET for a decade, including was a Chair. He's been our State Representative and this is not his first, not his second, but his third building committee. He served on Ham Out, were you the Chair of that?
No.
Okay, but he did chair New Lebanon and he's the Chair of the High School Entryway. So, and he runs a great meeting. So, if anybody's really excited on a Wednesday morning, they can listen in. So, Steve will fill in on the project.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are here to hopefully finalize the process before we head to the state and then hit the ground running to go out to bid for a GC and an owner's rep. There was some commentary tonight about, you know, sort of Town of Greenwich and lack of funding. This is not the case for this project. We certainly thank the Board of Ed, the BET, the RTM for their support of this project, both initially and also when we came back for additional funding some months ago. As you all know, this is a smaller project, but still. As you all know, this is a smaller project, but still one that is going to meet the, the desire and the ed specs. It is a security vestibule. We have given you renderings as we have right now as to what it will look like both outside and inside. Certainly, if you look at those renderings, there is a pop and there is a pride in the front office now. If you've been there recently, you can, I think you can agree with me that there is no pride or pop at our front main office at Greenwich High School. I call your attention, though, to the very last rendering, and that is the security desk. There is a little bit difference of an opinion, not only with the committee, but with the Board of Ed professional staff. In the base bid that we're going out with, we are not including security glass for the security desk that is within the vestibule. There's a difference of opinion whether or not it's too institutional versus the safety factor, which is obvious. We have included it as an ad alternate, and so if there is money and if you all tell us that that's a good idea and give us some direction, we would certainly include it. I think it's, it doesn't need to be decided today. It's certainly down the road, but something that, that you all should consider. And if you have an opinion, let us know. If you don't have an opinion, we'll make the decision as the time comes. The other ad alternates is to glaze the front side of the glass quarter if you're facing this new vestibule to the right. And the other ad alternate, the third one, is additional benches and additional hardscape to the landscaping. So it is not for landscaping, it's for hardscaping. That would make the, the front circle a little bit nicer. We already have $30,000 from the PTA, so we'd like to thank them for that. But there's still some work to be done. We're fairly confident that we're going to be able to hit this budget because we used the budget of the estimates that were provided. In terms of round numbers, the total construction estimate that we have just from our architect, not from an estimator, is about 2.5. Engineering and architectural costs, about 275. Owner's rep to reimburse for the state of 40. Owner's rep for the project, 137. We have included a contingency of about 10%, and so you're looking at a budget of rough numbers of about 3.28, and our total allocation is 3.5. So notwithstanding the fact that we have a 10% contingency, we still feel like we're, we're in a good place. We would go out, we would, we were supposed to meet with the state on the 22nd of March. If we do that and we are approved within, let's say, two weeks of that crossing our fingers, then we would be able to go out to bid in beginning of April, get back bids, award a contract by mid-May, and then have shovel in the ground as soon as the students leave the building in June, and do most of the heavy construction as much as we can through the summer months. With that, I'll entertain any questions, if that's okay.
Yes. Are there any questions from Mr. Walco? Mr. Kelly?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Steve. That was very nice. I just want to make something very clear because I didn't participate in any of the meetings and had no major discussions, but we reduced the scope of this project.
Correct.
Okay. Have we changed the level of security that this project will provide to the school by going from one presentation to now this reduced scope is the security, the same?
The security has not been compromised by this. As I said previously, though, this is the main security issue at Greenwich High School. It does not solve all of the security issues at Greenwich High School. But this project adheres to the ed specs and addresses the security concern as, as equally to what was in the prior project.
Thank you. That's.
Yeah, I might add to that, Joe. It really, it's not a reduced scope. It's a reduced size. Scope is the same. So the only item in the ed specs that changes from the last version to this is purely going from 2,200 to 1,100 square feet because the state's going to want that to match up.
Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions, Karen or Cody?
No questions for me.
I don't have, I don't necessarily have a question, but to your point, I do think that it would make sense at a later Board of Ed meeting to put the question of, of security glass as an agenda item because the, I think it's, I think it's a valuable discussion to have.
It's not cheap. I'll tell you that. All right. So I'm gonna call the question. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna do it as two motions, since I made it as two motions. So on the first motion, which is the drawings and specifications and cost estimates, motion one, can I, all in favor, raise your hand. Cody and Karen?
You can put me down as abstaining.
Cody's abstaining. Karen?
This is Karen. Yes.
Yes, so that's 701. Thank you. And on the second motion, which is just the revised ed specs, where the one change is the square footage, all in favor, raise your hand. Cody and Karen?
Name for me.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm abstaining again.
Abstaining again. And Karen?
I'm voting yes.
Okay, so 701. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And you could, when we're giving those superpowers, you could pass them, pass me it off to Michael.
Our next agenda item is the old Greenwich update, which will go to Mr. Mercanti, Dr. Mercanti Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. So I want to make a motion, and again, this is much like Christine, it's slightly amended from in the agenda. There's an extra sentence here. So the, the first motion, to get this on the table, the Board reaffirms its commitment to move forward on the old Greenwich School renovation project, understanding the updated estimate project costs that the building committee provided last week of, or last month, excuse me, of 39.35.9 million if in fiscal year '24 and 38 million if in fiscal year '25, and recognizing that the building committee will provide updated cost estimates based on a schematic design for renovation as well as the cost for possible new construction. The new addition, not on the previous agenda, should funding be postponed, the BOG requests 1.08 million in fiscal year '24 to complete the pre-construction work of the old Greenwich Building Committee.
Like just a point of order, if you want to just say be postponed, I think you want to be specific about what year, when you say.
Postponed in fiscal year '24. Thank you. Then the second motion, a motion to direct and authorize the OG Building Committee to start the municipal improvement process. Do I, so those two motions, and I see Mr. Kelly seconding both motions. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, the motion is seconded. So with that, let me introduce, bring, invite back the old Greenwich Building Committee Chair, James Waters. No stranger to the Board of Ed. He was just here last month. The, but you recall, last month, we had a conversation about the different funding structures, and obviously, there's been some conversations since then, since then about old Greenwich. So we wanted to bring him back to answer any questions before entertaining this motion.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. I think this is actually the third meeting in a row, and hopefully, I can give you a break for a couple of months.
We'll see if we can get your candy bar.
Thank you. But I was just going to say, but don't hold your breath because we're moving forward diligently, but quickly. I'll be brief. The purpose of the motions before you tonight are straightforward. First, we're asking you to confirm that we updated the project estimates for you last month. You'll recall, this update is solely related to incorporating realistic cost escalations from 2020 to present and a more standard 20% contingency for renovation. Second, we're asking for your support for moving the OGS project forward as quickly as possible, even if the BET will only provide incremental A&E funding in the coming budget. The building committee has concluded that we need an incremental 1.1 million, 1.085 million. You've seen the number before, in A&E funding to complete the pre-construction process. Third, we're asking for your support for moving the OGS renovation into the municipal improvement process. We're starting the schematic design process, aiming to complete it by June. At that point, we'll have professional cost estimates on our chosen design, and we'll share the design and those estimates with you. I'm hopeful we'll find savings from the estimates discussed last month. In parallel, the OGS Building Committee will be putting together a rough estimate on a new construction OGS. I've talked with our architect and owners up about it, and we'll get our engineers and construction manager involved. This will be additional work that I guess will come out of our current A&E funds. But we'll give you a picture at the relative cost of new construction versus the cost of renovation as, as per schematic design. When we provide these numbers to you this summer, I hope we can make a good and expedited decision on which path to take. It's clear to me, sitting in my seat, that the old Greenwich community and the building committee do not want us to slow down. I could talk more, but I'll reserve it for questions. Thanks for listening, and thanks for having me.
So a couple of questions. So I saw the flow of emails this week and maybe even last regarding this cost of a new school versus renovations. So what do we have an estimate of what it would cost for the current crew to put together what the cost of a new school would be? And what are they going to base it on? Simply a rebuild of the news, of the current school and its formation? Because it'd be a little hard, I guess, to say what something would cost when you don't have ed specs for the entire school. So I'm just curious as to how they're going to be out to create that.
Yeah. So this is going to be a moving target for us. I think the big, one of the big things from my perspective that we need to have a look at is, you know, just a rough ballpark of school size, right? I think that's going to be an important driver of this. You know, we have some comparative examples that we can use. We certainly know how many students and classrooms are at the current OGS. And I think it's kind of why I call it a rough estimate. We're not going to have ed specs. But our architects have done this kind of project before, where, you know, you're, it's sort of conceptual in nature. So it's a great question. The others, the other thing that's on my mind is if we were to head in that direction, how does, how do we, how do we do that in a flood zone? Because we're going to have to raise, it's going to be a significant amount of site work. We are in a FEMA AE flood zone. So, yeah, that's going to be, I, I think we shouldn't underestimate what that is. And the, the other thing we have, we have, we do have, I think you probably did see in that flow of traffic. We, we do have, like, I mean, we have the cost of new construction in the state of Connecticut on a dollar per square foot basis. You know, it's something like, over the last few years, it's something like $734 a square foot. So I know that's being discussed in other projects. We did, we did the homework. We did the research. We did the math. We know those are the numbers. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see. We'll get, we'll get construction, construction manager involved to talk about, look at constructability. We will get people to sort of leverage their professional hats to give us real numbers. So that, that's kind of how I'm thinking about it. I don't have it exactly all mapped out because obviously, you know, my top priority here is what you guys have authorized us to do, which is the ed specs and to get our schematic design done. We will get that done.
Yes, Mr. Stowe.
Thanks. I think it's much of what I said at the last meeting, right? And I was a little bit surprised to see this back here because I feel like we all sort of showed our support at the last meeting. And my only concern with this motion is that I don't like the option of the 1 million. I think that this has been, I mean, I know I'm now been on the board the longest. We've been talking about this for a very long time. The OG community deserves this building as fast as possible, and to me, it's just flat out wrong to delay it another year. I'm not sure. I have any other options in front of me, but I just wanted to express that that's my issue with this motion. I think it should be 30, you know, 5.9 million now in fiscal year '24. Thanks.
Thank you.
I share your sentiment, Kathleen, that I think, you know, we talked, we talked about it a lot last meeting, that this project is ready. It's ripe. It's moving on a very quick path because its scope is very defined, and we've got a great building committee, and it's, it's very clear this is what the community wants. I think, I don't know if in feasibility, a new building was ever discussed. I don't think there's an appetite for it in the community, not even getting into the, a dollar, if dollars were a wash, the community doesn't necessarily want it. So, but I think to satisfy the BET, I understand their concerns. So I think, James, I applaud your willingness to work with them. But I'm with Kathleen. I, I'm, I'm okay. I, you know, no, okay. I think this project should move forward in fiscal year '24. I don't, I can't say it any clearer than that. However, I can make that request, but I don't control the purse strings, and I don't want this project to be left without the architecture and engineering money that is necessary. And if the motion is the way to get the BET to focus on both the project and its preparation and its readiness, and with the understanding that we've communicated very clearly to them that we want this project to move forward with all due speed, and, but we understand that if you're, if the BET makes a choice not to go ahead to fund the project next year, we do need money to keep it moving in 1.1 million.
Can I just chime in one thing? So, you know, we've, we've had some discussion about this, about this. Look, I, I share your sentiment. I just want to, I want to move it, move this forward as quickly as we can. We are ready. One thing that I do want to say and just make sure, I think you guys are all tracking on it, but it's probably appropriate to say it in, in a sort of this forum is, you know, if there is, there's some, some decision to be made in June or summer timeframe, and, and we decide to shift course, the building committee would certainly urge the Board of Ed to proceed with haste and, and to proactively manage the potential for controversy about this and be prepared for it, and, and with historic building advocates. It's a 121-year-old building. So it, my, my view would be, if we do get to a point where we shift focus, I, and had already been anticipating construction funds in next year's budget, I would encourage this board to move forward with haste in next year's budget as well. There's no, no, you know, no reason that we need to wait on ed specs. You know, we can, we can move forward. We can help you with that. And, and I think we will have this, a year from now, we will have this, knock on wood, ready to go.
So I did want to address a couple of points. One, being on the feasibility study because I was part of that committee with respect to the feasibility. No, we did not find, determine, or want to look at what a new school would cost because the overwhelming support from the community was to keep that school. That school is iconic. It has a lot of stories. It has, and it serves the purpose for that community, but it needs some renovations. It needs some additions. It needs some issues to be addressed. And I think that you would have all of the old Greenwich community and probably the likes of many other communities who walked down that Sound Beach Avenue and look at that school and say, are you kidding? Why would you ever get rid of something that is just so darn beautiful? And something that is such a piece of our community and defines what old Greenwich is about. So the short answer to the question is, we didn't entertain it anything beyond, well, do we need a new school? And the answer was, no, we just need to fix the one that's here because that's what they want. And so while the BET has requested this information, and I think it comes along the lines of other schools, you know, New Lebanon was built for something a little bit more. I get it, but I just think it's the wrong choice. I personally think it's a waste of time and money. And I would, I strongly support the ed specs that we had approved a year and a half ago now, and we worked really hard to get them. I like them. I hope to formulate them. So I think that they, they are, they are what we need. On the second point, I strongly encourage and think that old Greenwich is ready to go, and I would be sad to see it fall in the next year. But I do think that we are at a point for. But I do think that we are at a point for this board to really consider what, not only what our priorities are, but what message that we want to send, uh, in October. Or was it, sorry, maybe it was December we voted on this. Was it December? October. So sorry. October, you know, we, we knew at that time and had conversations. We put both schools in our capital plan and what I'm referring to is old Greenwich and C M S. Because we didn't have enough information at the time to understand where we would be. And we didn't want to put one in versus another because we didn't want to lose the opportunity for one of those schools to go forward, particularly if the one we chose wasn't ready. And we knew that two schools wasn't going to get done. And we took a sense in the meeting that night, realizing that we needed to reevaluate and make a decision as a board as to what our priorities were with respect to, to what our priorities were going to be with respect to do schools once we had more information. Now, do we have perfect information at the point, this point in time? No, we don't, but we do have more information and I think we're coming to a point where we as a board need to make a decision and do our job. We know both schools aren't going to get built. And I don't feel that we, as a, an elected board are doing our job by simply saying, well, we want both. So we'll pass it to somebody else. We know it's not going to happen. We need to make a decision. And I think we're at a point in time where we need to do, make that decision, do our job and send a clear message. C M S, whether it's gets done this year or the following year, we'll have to decide right now. If I look at all the facts before us, and I know Ms. Costin's going to speak soon about where we're at, but we've heard what's going on and we know what's going on. Um, in my opinion, old Greenwich is probably in a much better position to move forward and get done than C M S is at this point in time. We're going to talk about C M S coming forward, but I do think that it, C M S is a huge project and we need to do it right. And I'm really afraid that pushing forward on C M S because we have so many issues to deal with there is going to be rushed and it's not going to be done right. And the problem we'll run into is the fact that it may not, it most likely won't be ready. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. Ms. Costin will say it will be, and I know that. I hear you, Laura. I'm very concerned it won't, but I don't have that much of a concern as it relates to old Greenwich. And it's not because of the failings of one ward versus the other. Those building committees have worked very hard and I respect them. They are volunteers. They get paid zero two and I, they meet more now than these, this board does. I get that. But I do think we have, you know, a day of reckoning is coming and we need to make a decision. I fully support old Greenwich going forward and I see that as the more viable option at this point in time.
I, I, I see Karen online and then we'll go to you.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think we, we have had a, a discussion in the past and saying how, uh, which we fully support uh, the needs of the old Greenwich School and community. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, I fully support this going ahead as it is. Um, I recognize, uh, what Karen is saying in, in, in some regards, but we are doing what we are be, what we have been tasked to do as a board. Uh, we've been tasked to support our schools, our students and provide them with appropriate learning spaces. Um, and that's what we're doing. We're putting those forward. We've been putting them forward for quite some time. Um, we're at the point where we really are, are, are ready, ready to go with this school. Um, and it's not really, it's, it's unclear to me why we're being put in a position yet again and being asked to place one school's needs ahead of another. Uh, we made it clear they're both in need. Um, it's, and it is for us to be able to put those things forward, um, you know, to, 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 you know, to be funded and to be supported by, uh, you know, members of our community. And so I think that's what we need to do. Um, it's not, it's not about one school versus another. It's about both schools, uh, that need to, to get this work done and we need to start moving forward. We can't keep pushing this off any longer.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, I don't think there's anything, I certainly am reading anything in the, in the wording of the current motion that is putting uh, one school in, in, in front of the others. So just want to clarify.
No, I, I was just simply referring to, you know, um, Ms. Kowalski's comments about, you know, one project versus another. And so that's why I just
I didn't say that. I didn't say that either.
No, we were just, I, I know. I'm just saying in, in reference to, I, you know, I don't have the exact words, but I just wanted to say, I just don't want to be putting this uh, comparing one versus the other. That's all. I think it's important. We support both.
Laura?
So, uh, I just want to say that our vote for our capital request was our voice. It was my vote of support then. It is still my vote unchanged in support now. I think we have the means in this town to do both. And you know, with approximately ninety-three million at last glance in our rainy day fund, let the B E T look the old Greenwich community in the eye and try to justify a vote against funding for this school. I think I am all in on C M S, J C and old Greenwich. So that's my vote of support.
Go ahead, Christine.
No, no, I just, I think we, we, many, I think we all feel the same way. I think, um, to Karen Hersh's point, our role um, is to advocate for what we believe our students need. And we all, I think we all agree that our students need both facilities. Um, I don't think it's our job to tell the B E T, um, which to go first because I think we do want both. Um, and it's incumbent upon them to find a way to pay for it. I think they've created a construct of a capital ceiling. I know this is the biggest capital budget in the history of the town, but these are exceptional circumstances. And I think there's uh, years of deferred projects, not, not a single one of our master facilities planned projects has been done. So that's six years um, that we've been waiting. And so maybe when, after you wait six years, you have to kind of ante up. So my view would be, I think it's fully appropriate for us to ask for both. Um, and that's what I, I believe we should do. And I think the one thing that's good about this motion is it confirms to the B E T that we accept the new figures on old Greenwich now that more vetting has been done by the committee and a more realistic number has been put out there so that should it come back down the road, we can say that we acknowledge that that's the cost of a renovation, um, based on our building committee. So I, I think that's helpful.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I said this last meeting. I'll say it again. I love all our building committee children all the same. Uh, I would like to call a question.
Fair enough. The, um, I have some comments, um, on C M S, but I don't want to, but that's the next agenda item. So I'm going to hold my, my, my comments there because I do think there are some, some questions there. But as far as this motion, let me just reiterate what I think I'm hearing everybody saying, and I certainly agree with. Like the wording of this motion is designed just that, to try to move this project forward as quickly as possible. What I think there is, um, I'm hearing pretty much unanimity on the board that we all are believers in this project. Um, so the question's been called. So all in favor?
Motion one.
Motion one, excuse me. All in favor of motion one, excuse me? One, two, three, four, five. Cody?
Yep.
Karen?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that is seven, opposed. So seven zero one. All in favor of motion two around the initiating the municipal improvement process? Oh, uh, in favor? Cody? Is it yes? It looks like. And Karen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight oh. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Michael, could you pass those magical superpowers to Laura?
Can I yield to the, uh, the, the honorable gentlewoman from, uh, like a wilderness back there.